For stepping up to the bar and asking some questions. This has never really happened before, but I'm really happy that it has. It shows it's to some interest, and I would hope others would do that. So, I would like to submit this for the record, and I hope we can discuss this later. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Benson?
Is it time to comment? May I comment on this?
Sure.
And take upon a special privilege?
Sure.
On point of special privilege, Mr. Zakaria, don't kill the messenger. I'm not killing you. But Mr. Zakaria, or whomever is the president of that committee, should have sent each member the letter.
He did.
I didn't get it. And there is no P in children. And there is no P in budget. We have an open budget hearing, and he could have attended the budget hearing. And it is absolutely unpolitical for him to be lobbying the school committee as to what we should cut in the budget.
Oh, he didn't say that. You didn't, Ms. Benson, he didn't say that.
I considered lobbying when he sent you a letter.
Well, first of all, he sent it to you, too.
I didn't get it.
Okay? Well, you emailed it to everyone. Number one, and number two is, he just said, "I think we should consider that." And there's others here, I think, at the table that wanted to consider that as well.
Okay. When we have open budget meeting, we will do that. But on special privilege, that is how I feel as a representative of the school committee. And Secretary, do I have that as an email?
As an email, yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Abizad?
Putting my emails, I can't be prepared, and it puts me at a disadvantage. So, I'm not holding the messenger.
Mrs. Abizad?
I just want to note that I responded to that email, and I told Mr. Zakaria that we welcome any citizens and anyone's suggestions regarding the budget. And we all understand the difficult financial times we're in. And I also suggested that he might hold the town council to that same standard, given that over the last two years, the school department has cut, we've almost level funded this budget two years in a row now. I think we've done a good job of keeping our costs down, whereas on the town side, you know, 3.1 million additional tax dollars, local tax money, was given to the town. We took very little of that. So, they need to be really cognizant of the spending on their side of the aisle. It needs to be even-handed between both. And I did respond to that email. Just wanted to note that.
Is there any other correspondence? Dr. Thornton?
Just two quick pieces in your packet. One piece, I would just point your attention to. There was a suggestion by a member of the committee that I turned off an email of a teacher for comments they may have made that I did not like. As you would see in the correspondence, that's not the case. Individuals who email the teacher used the wrong email. So, I would just say, in the future, please, for clarity, make sure you get the right email before you make the accusation that I've turned off a teacher's email. Secondly, I need some guidance from the school committee in terms of work requests that I may get from school committee members. At times, I'm finding that some of the requests are now going into the very lengthy nature, if you will. So, I guess to me, I need some guidance as to what's the scope of where I'd come back to the committee to ask to have the homework done, if you will, versus when do we just simply do it? So, I guess I'm looking for a little, just a...
Well, that's my request, and I think we ought to express what that request is.
Sure.
And ultimately, I'm going to ask for a legal opinion, a real legal opinion.
Sure.
Okay? Because I believe what I've asked for, I, first of all, I asked for the teacher's salary, the teacher's benefits, the teacher's steps, the teacher's merit pay, the longevity, and so forth and so on, to analyze that, and pension contributions and things like that. In other districts, in fact, you'll see that that information is, in fact, included in the budget.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order.
I'm responding to superintendent, please.
Excuse me, just a second, Mr. Bud. Yes, Mrs. Abizad?
I would just ask that people respond to the chair rather than to one another, and that this doesn't get into a, we place this on a future agenda if it's a topic we need to discuss, and the superintendent needs direction from the school committee.
Well, I...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I believe that the superintendent is correct, that anything that involves a lot of labor and time should come from direction from the committee as a whole, not from an individual.
I would call for a legal opinion, please, from the council.
What type of legal opinion do you want, Mr. Mudge? Whether you have a right to this information?
That's right. As a, as part of, you know, doing my due diligence for the budget and so forth and so on.
Mr. Mudge, if you ask for this information under APRA...
Yeah?
You, this information is all information that you should receive under APRA.
But I can't receive it as a scoop, can you?
However, let me, no, no, let me just tell you. Under APRA, then the district, you would have, you would be charged 15 cents a page and $15 an hour.
They don't want a page. All they want is the electronic spreadsheets.
As a member of the school committee, so under APRA, you have every right to have every piece of information you're asking in this.
Yeah.
Under, as a school committee member, do you have a right to have it? Every school committee member has a right to have all of this information. It's a matter of, will this school committee agree that the superintendent needs to stop what he's doing and give it out? Because if he's giving it to you, he's giving it to every single member of the committee.
Oh, absolutely. I didn't say stop today, but what I've heard is that I'm not going to be provided the information. Period.
Doctors?
I think that's what I heard.
Dr. Thornton?
To be fair, in the past week, we have responded to already, I believe, three very intensive queries. We've responded to those. This would be, I believe, could be the fourth.
From whom?
And, I could finish. This one, we're talking about getting spreadsheet data from fiscal year '08, '09, '10, '11 in terms of benefits, base, step, grade, pension contributions. It's not just running a report. This would be very, very time-intensive. I'm just saying, before I go into this with my staff, I'd like a little conversation with the committee about, do you want us to be doing this type of depth of analysis over multiple years?
Well, it's not a...
Not on the agenda, right?
Not on the agenda. It's nothing that we can vote on tonight. It needs to be an agenda item to be discussed. And I guess what you're saying, Dr. Thornton, is that unless this committee gives you the approval to go forward, or gives you some guidelines, you're not willing, at this point in time, to expend the energy, labor, et cetera, to answer this request. Is that correct?
I'd like to have it on a future agenda, to talk about the scope of work in general. But yes, that's correct.
Listen, you're withholding the information. Let's just be clear about it. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Abizad?
I would ask that if you put on the agenda as a general topic of school committee member requests, so that we can address this topic in a general format, as well as the particular instance we're talking about.
Okay. You do realize that this cannot go on until March 8th?
So, I really believe this information is germane to the budget cycle.
Okay. All right. So, if we could, please, put that on the agenda for March 8th? Thank you. Okay. Disclosure of executive session votes.
Are we still on correspondence?
Yes.
Do you have something for correspondence?
Well, I had one thing, and now I think I might have another.
Well, go ahead, then.
The first thing was, I received correspondence about fundraiser for West Side Story, and it's going to be held on the 13th Sunday from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Junction. I believe the cast members, and there may be someone here to speak that knows more about this, are going to wait on table, and their tips and portion of the money paid is going to help to support that fine effort.
This is at Wickford Junction?
At the Junction Pizza, which I think is across from Staples.
Okay. Thank you. What else did you have?
I think I'll withhold the second thing. I'll cover that in private. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, now, if we could, please, move on to disclosure of the executive session votes, please.
All members were present at the February 8th executive session meeting, except for Larry Cerisi. Motion passed unanimously to go into executive session. Motion passed 501 to approve the sealed executive session minutes of January 25th, 2011. Bill Mudge abstained. Motion passed unanimously to seal the executive session minutes, and motion passed unanimously to adjourn executive session and go into open.
If I might, Bill Mudge abstained because he was not in that executive committee.
Right. I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. The consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which people would like to exempt?
Item F, please.
All of F?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Mr. Cerisi?
Mr. Chairman, if you have prior meeting minutes on the consent agenda to approve, I'm not quite sure. I'm looking at...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. D.
D. I'd like to exempt them, being that I wasn't present for those meetings. I'll need to abstain from the vote...
Okay.
...to approve those minutes.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. If I could have a, sorry, what?
Just making a motion.
Oh. If I could have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Bill, item F on the consent agenda.
My question is, are these advisors and these appointments, are these folks already performing these duties? That's my first question.
Dr. Thornton?
In front of Mrs. Gardner. She's in the audience.
Mrs. Gardner?
Well, that kind of flies in the face of other issue concerning our teachers, when apparently somebody's performing a duty and hasn't been approved by the school committee. How can that be?
Well, number A, you can see, they were approved at the December 14th meeting, and they're being rescinded now because they're no longer, they never started in the position. And there was a delay, I would say, probably this year, because we have, you know, two new people at the high school. We have the principal and the clerk, and this whole process is new to them. And it took them a while for teachers to respond with the stipend that they should get. They each had to fill out a slip of paper, and it's based on the formula and the contract that determines the stipend amount. And if I can tell you, Richard Koo, the gentleman in the audience, asked why that was such a high increase originally. When Richard Koo filled out the formula, he did it incorrectly. And he worked with the secretary recently, and it was determined that he had originally filled out it incorrectly, and that's why there is such an increase.
Well, again, I get, my, I understand that explanation, but it still bothers me that we have people working under certain employment conditions, and the school committee has not authorized these expenditures, and yet they're performing the job. How can that happen?
We would do the best we can to get things in a timely fashion. Like I said, there were new people here. We couldn't get the information back from the teachers in a timely fashion.
So, regardless of getting school committee approval, we went ahead and hired them and let them go to work. Excuse me?
I mean, not all of the clubs, I would say. Not 100% of them are doing it, I'm sure, right now, because some do four quarters, some do two quarters, some do...
I understand, but it's, this is, because this has been, as you know, in the past, even years ago, it's one of my hang-ups about people being hired and performing duties without first being approved by the school committee. That's all I want to say.
But I did say typically, typically, they are on the agenda a lot earlier, in September.
But I know there are several, several cases, even this year, in the past, that that's happened. So, I think that we should refrain from doing that. And if we have to call an emergency meeting, then we ought to do that, to hire the folks we need to.
Superintendent?
Thank you.
Dr. Thornton?
Well, Mr. Mudge, your point is well-taken, and we will strive to do better in that area.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else on that, Mr. Mudge?
No, sir. That's fine.
Does anyone else have anything on that?
Motion to approve agenda item F.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving item F on the consent agenda? Aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. D?
Larry exempted the minutes.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah. Somebody could just make a motion to approve that, so I can abstain.
I would, I would make a motion to approve item D.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business for discussion of possible action.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Please, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mudge.
I've already approved it, but I'm looking, I'm not sure that, you say, approval of prior meeting minutes. Shouldn't we really identify what meeting minutes we are speaking of? I, that's kind of a broad base. Is it yesterday, the day before, is it last week, is it a week before?
It was the budget meeting of January 18th, and then the business meeting of January 25th.
January 18th and...
And January 25th.
That's school committee, that's, so that, those are the school committee meeting minutes?
Meeting, business meeting of January 25th, and a budget work session on January 18th.
Okay. I think, I would recommend that, you know, in the future, we just put the dates down so we know what we're talking about.
That was the date. Yep. Thank you. We normally are on the agenda, I think.
We're on a, just for everyone's understanding, we are on a little bit of a learning curve. Laureen's doing a great job trying to get up to speed here, so if, you know, on these kinds of things...
Sure. I understand.
Okay. Mrs. Benson?
Your point's well-taken, and I agree with your words. But when she put the date on in parentheses, say, open meeting, executive meeting, and so forth, exactly.
Okay.
And I think she's a very smart study, even though she is on the learning curve.
Thank you.
So, we won't give them the impression that she needs to have a little extra training from someone. She's a smart study.
Well, she's definitely is very pleasant. Give her an eighth of applause.
I don't think pleasantity would enter in with her work, and I was speaking of her work.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mudge?
Mr. Chairman, not to be picky, but have we seen the minutes for the 25th meeting?
They should be, do you have your iPad? They're in the packet.
No. I left it in the car. Now, we haven't approved those minutes, have we?
You just, you just approved, just now.
Both of them. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we said the 18th and 27th.
25th.
20th.
18th and the 25th.
Okay. I proved something easy.
Moving on to the unfinished business, item A, 2010, 2011 school budget. Dr. Thornton?
For this year's budget, I defer Mr. Draper. Next year's budget, I will take over from there. Mr. Draper, any updates for 10-11?
No. Our freeze continues. Our monthly deficit report, as of right now, looks like we're going to shake out okay at this time of the year. The assumptions we're using are that Edgewood Jobs is going to go to next year, that throughout the balance of the year, we're going to be able to keep going with a freeze and not have a deficit this year, and that the state funding will remain in place.
Are we in any trouble on snowplowing?
So, so far, we're okay.
Any questions of... Mr. Draper? Mrs. Benson?
I have one. Mr. Draper, are we going on a freeze at the expense of not doing the things that we need for this school year, and then in July, come out with a surplus? Are the students getting what they need, and the teachers, and their supplies? Are we working on a freeze to increase the surplus? Do I do that to, that question to Mr. Draper?
Dr. Thornton?
Or Dr. Thornton? I saw you two communicating.
I could take that one if I could.
Okay. I'd love you to.
We don't freeze with the mode of trying to get money for a fund balance. We approve all the supplies teachers need. Things we've done this year, for example, going back to K-5, we had some expenses we wouldn't normally have. We approve those. What we do do is, with a freeze put on, is an extra level of scrutiny on what we approve. It comes to my desk, and we look at it, and we say yea or nay, based on the needs. But no, we are not putting on a freeze with the goal of stockpiling money.
Well, that brings me to another question. If a teacher needs something to carry out the curriculum, and to bring other incentives to the classroom, and to help get the program over, will those things be on freeze, let's say, movies, help on field trips?
Field trips are running as they, as they normally run. Curriculum supplies...
Could you give me an example of how they normally run? I know children pay, but I thought we gave a little bit of it.
Field trip request forms come in. If they're in state, Dr. Ogier approves them. Out of state, I approve them. Some cases, they're funded with PTO funds, some cases, school-funded, et cetera. But no, we are not curbing field trips based on budget freezes.
Not only field trips, please, don't take my question as to be for field trips. I'm talking about things that are a necessity to the child's education, and something that a teacher would feel that she needs and the students need in order to carry out the BEP. Maybe that will give you an understanding of what I mean. You know, we educators cannot talk to each other, because each one of us have our theories.
Requests that we've gotten, we have approved. For example, around three weeks back, we were over at Davisville Middle School, and the middle school science coordinator inquired about the Gen's Net science kits and the replenishment that was approved. Remember, we served, that was around a $4,700 approval...
Very good. That's what I want to hear.
For refunding the kits for next year. So, the answer is, yes, we are approving what the kids need at this point in time.
Was that, I heard you use the word next year.
We are approving what is needed to run this year's educational program.
That's what I want to hear you say, this year's. Thank you. I'm very pleased with that.
Dr. Thornton, if I might add, that the reason for the freeze is also to make sure that we don't overspend our budget, to make sure that we live within the state law, that we cannot run a deficit budget.
Right. Typically, what we do is, every month or so, Mr. Draper's office does a, an accounting, if you will, and we see where we are. As things get close, we do operate under a freeze, and then we can better manage, as you can imagine, the multiple accounts that go in and go out. And by doing that, we get more efficiencies, and we can do, as you'll see this spring, probably some transfers to try to, you know, tighten things up. It's a good thing to do to really, you know, keep a close track on the operations, and we do do it when we feel it's getting a little tight in some areas. Some key indicators pop, and that's when we do that.
Okay?
I understand. And there is a word that was used, and I kept asking, what was that? It gives us the flexibility, it gives us the flexibility, and give you, as superintendent, the flexibility from breakage. Now, that's what I say. That's very good, that we can do that, because that is often needed in the schools. It gives him the flexibility to use the breakage. Am I saying something wrong?
Who are you looking at?
At looking at you.
I'm just waiting for you to finish that and call on Mr. Mudge.
Body language.
Yours or mine? Mr. Mudge?
Yours.
Maybe I should dance. I don't know. Listen, a couple of questions. I assume, I just say assume, but I want to get it clarified. We're not holding back any monies for supplies and materials we need to do for maintenance and operations of our buildings.
I think the first thing I, I'm sorry, Mr. Welch?
Go ahead, Dr. Thornton.
The first thing I would say there is, you know, historically, in NK for the past several years, you mentioned maintenance or upkeep. We have not been funding our CIP. So, to be fair, I would say, no, the district has not been funded in terms of the CIP. So, in terms of all the maintenance, no, we have been deferring maintenance. That's been, that's why the bond's coming up. The bond conversation's happening.
But I wasn't really talking about the school capital reserve fund. I was talking about the operational money that is in this budget to do maintenance and operation. That is separate and distinct...
Correct.
...from the school cap reserve fund. So, you address the school cap reserve fund, okay, which may or may not be adequate. That's a separate issue. Nonetheless, the day-to-day maintenance and operations of cleaning, you know, filters, you know, grease on the valve, I mean, on the, you know, bearings and that type of stuff must happen. That's what my question is, okay? Anything that's in this budget, this budget, are we not doing or not because of a lack of, because of a freeze?
No.
Okay. Fine. That's what I thought. Also, I would ask, have we notified the auditor general that we have a cafeteria issue, funding issue?
I'll refer to Mr. Draper on that. Mr. Draper, where are we on that?
To the degree that it's reported in our audit, yes. Have we specifically reached out?
I'm talking about this year's, not last year's, this year's.
Beyond what's reported? Beyond what's reported through our audit? No.
No, no. I say audit. That's 2010. That's last year. We don't have, we didn't have to do an audit this year, did we? 2011?
No, that won't be completed until December.
Right. But we know we're going to be $100,000 short in the cafeteria account this year. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Have we notified the auditor general? Do we have a workaround plan, and we're going to get the money?
No, we have not.
How long have we known that, and when are we going to notify the auditor general and to obtain the workaround?
Well, the deficit, as you would see from the prior year's audits, FY09 and FY10, addressed the deficit in the cafeteria fund on a go-forward basis.
I'm speaking of 2011.
And I'm trying to answer your question, Mr. Mudge.
You've not done a good job.
Shame on you.
Excuse me?
When we took care of the overall losses to the cafeteria fund, we asked for a specific school committee action to do that. In this year, this current FY11 operating year, we asked for the committee to set aside fund balance towards the anticipated losses in the cafeteria fund. We also addressed that with the auditor for FY10 and for FY11. We did not inform the auditor general, because it's our understanding that we've taken action on behalf of the school committee to use fund balance. Where there, where there no fund balance, we would anticipate that the school district would operate at a deficit, and we'd have to report it.
I don't think that, that's what the law says. The law says, when you have a $100,000 deficit in a line item, you must identify that to the auditor general. And then you tell them what the fix is, and that is, the school committee is going to approve, okay, funding from prior year surplus.
But what I'm saying, Mr. Mudge, is that this school committee, a year ago, when
But what I'm saying, Mr. Mudge, is that this school committee, a year ago, when we went through the budget process, approved a deficit in the cafeteria.
For this year?
For this year.
Well, is it in the budget?
In last year's budget, yes.
I'm talking about fiscal year 11, okay?
Maybe I'm not being clear. For fiscal year 11's budget-
Yeah.
Last year, around this time, it was brought to the school committee's attention that they would have a deficit in fiscal year 11. At that time in the budget book, we presented a deficit. The school committee took an action and said, yes, we will support a deficit in the cafeteria fund with fund balance. So for fiscal year 11, the school committee has assigned fund balance to cover the deficit of this year.
Is that documented and is it in the budget someplace?
Yes.
Where?
Fiscal year 11, I'll give you the page in just a moment. I'll look it up online.
So in other words, we're going to have $100,000 that's added to this year's budget, basically.
Correct. And it'll come out of the fund.
I just haven't seen that, that's all.
Okay. It'll come out of the fund balance, correct. Mr. Cerisi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of clarification. I believe the reporting to the auditor general is, the district is running a budget deficit for the budget in its entirety, not a deficit in one specific line item of the budget in its entirety.
That's correct, because I'm sure there are many line items that could be negatives where others are positives. So you report to the auditor general if your bottom line, if you believe your budget is going to be in deficit.
So the law requires the bottom line budget, if it's going to be in deficit, the district has an obligation to report that to the auditor general, not for a specific line item.
Right. If the district believes they are going to run a deficit in their overall budget, then by law, it's required to be reported to the auditor general.
I'd like to go on record and say I believe that too.
Correct.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cerisi?
Can we please, I mean, I'd love to have this dialogue, but can we please require members to raise their hands and wait and wait to be recognized by the chairman, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mudge?
I would like to get a written, okay, legal opinion on that. I believe it's wrong. I've read the regulation, okay? It is not on the bottom line budget, it's about line items. And by the way, it has nothing to do with the $59 million school budget.
Okay. Is that a motion? Are you making a motion, Mr. Mudge?
Yeah, because what this has to do with is a budget that was never approved, that's the school cafeteria account, which is not part of the budget.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we get this clarified on what constitutes the notification, the proper notification to the auditor general, given we have a $100,000 deficit in the school cafeteria fund.
Okay. Is there a second? Hearing done?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I second the motion for informational purposes and to clarify a problem.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Avzano?
Quick question. Is this a complex question for, to be answered in writing? Is it relatively simple?
No, it's not complex.
Okay.
Good, then we can, I second the motion for that.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. We'll move on. Any more, anything else on the 2010-11 school budget? We'll move on to the next item, the 2011-
Mr. Chairman, I see that we have the employee review here, but I recommend that we could skip down to that and then come back to the budget here, seeing that, you know, the folks have been here all evening.
I second that. Okay. Mr., Dr. Thornton, please. Item D on unfinished business.
As you recall, last meeting, Mr. Idell came to open mic and he discussed with the committee his first weeks in the school district. And two members of the committee did ask to put it back on the agenda to have a discussion in further detail. So certainly open to any questions the committee has as far as, you know, what you want to learn and where you want to go with this.
Attorney Carroll, do you have any comments? May I comment?
Yes. I can explain to the committee what happened and what state statute says. I have no problem doing that. Would you like me to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Point of order.
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
I would prefer, and maybe if I'm wrong, attorney, tell me, but if you're going to explain what you did in executive session, I think we would be better served if we heard from the complainant and then you explained those things.
Yeah, I would agree with that. This is supposed to be discussion with, you know, with, I believe, Mr. Idell. Think there's, wasn't there a discussion back and forth? A hearing?
That's funny. I'm looking for the attorney to give us legal opinion-
Sure.
So that everyone on the committee, as well as the public, are aware of the legal issues involved.
I think that's a good idea and I applaud you for doing that, but let's hear the problem. As the judge in this situation, you're given the summation before the attorneys can speak.
Thank you. Mrs. Carroll, would you continue, please?
Yes.
Could we take a vote on that?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cerisi.
This is not a matter to be discussed or voted on. You're simply getting an overview and a history, I believe, from your attorney. And I think it's very informative, or will be informative, to the committee and the public before this discussion goes any further. I certainly look forward to having the full discussion, but whether the attorney speaks first, last, or in the middle is irrelevant. Can we please just let the attorney speak for a minute and then move on with this?
Thank you, Mrs. Cerisi.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
Did I be recognized?
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
Okay. We began this last week and we asked the gentleman to come back. And we, as members, heard the attorney's speech in executive session. I bear on the side of let him finish, let him finish, then she gives the information for the public. Let him finish.
Thank you.
Because this is a continuation.
Okay. Mrs. Carroll, would you please continue?
Yes. First of all, in terms of appointing personnel, the superintendent has to make a recommendation to the school committee. But that personnel is not appointed until the school committee votes. What happened in August was several teachers were put on the agenda at higher steps than this committee had directed the superintendent. Basically, when we had done the retirement plan, it was told to the superintendent that if you want to do an early retirement, you need to come back to us with teachers who are on first or second step. When the agenda came out, there were several teachers who were on higher than first or second step. At that point, the superintendent made his recommendation to appoint those teachers. The school committee could have, at the time, voted not to appoint them. And since it's the superintendent's recommendation and then the school committee's confirmation, if that evening, the school committee had voted not to appoint those teachers, those teachers would not be employees of the North Kingstown School Department right now. What happened instead is several members of the school committee, concerned about the fact that they had requested that teachers be hired at lower steps, they asked me to look at the step increments that were being offered to these teachers. When I reviewed the step increments for about five or six of those teachers, I realized that three teachers that were on the agenda were on the agenda at higher steps than were required by Rhode Island statute. According to 16729, a step schedule needs to be determined by a community. That step schedule in 1984 was identified and was given further information for the Rhode Island Supreme Court. When the Rhode Island Supreme Court actually gave an opinion, that step increases were given for in-state public service only. The three teachers that were on a higher step actually did not have any in-state public school service. Therefore, when I informed the committee that these three teachers did not have any prior in-state service, and therefore, it was not required that they be hired at a higher step, the committee voted to hire the teachers rather than not hire the teachers at step one. Now, there also was a question as to whether these teachers relied on the fact that they had been given something in writing telling them that they were hired on the higher step. And basically, the Supreme Court has also ruled on that issue in the case of Romano versus the Retirement Board, where it basically says, if you are, if it's a municipality, as this is, and you are told by someone that you are going to be given, that something's going to be given to you, because it's a municipality, you can't rely on someone who doesn't have the authority to do so. In this particular case, the superintendent can recommend, but teachers are not hired on a higher step until the school committee confirms that recommendation. And there are several other cases that support that. And if necessary, I could provide to the school committee both that case and the additional cases that support that. So what I'm explaining to this committee is that those, the three teachers who were involved, it was not required that they be paid on a higher step, nor was it required that the school committee accepted the recommendation of the superintendent to pay them at a higher step.
Thank you. Mrs. Avzano?
I don't know if it's discussion of the committee yet. I understand all of that and I think that the school committee was looking to do the fiscally responsible thing. But I think it's important that it be communicated to the employees in such a way that the employee understands that this is something that's contingent upon school committee approval. And I spoke to Dr. Thornton about that and the form that they were using to give employees was an older form and didn't specifically instruct them of that.
Mr. Cerisi?
Just a brief comment. I, just to kind of expand on what Mrs. Avzano was saying, if I remember correctly, the intent of the committee was the superintendent offered an early retirement incentive last year, which the committee voted to approve. And I think the idea was you would have step 10 teachers retiring and step 1 or 2 teachers coming in and replacement and that the difference in those salaries would be a benefit to the school district's budget. And I think the committee had given some direction or requested a superintendent to bring step 1s and step 2s. The point that I'm trying to make here is that it was specifically a budgetary issue for the committee in looking to achieve some savings in the budget through these retirements. Lastly, I have some concerns, and I guess I would defer to the superintendent or to Attorney Carroll on this, I have some concerns with the process that the committee is following here or the road that the committee is going down here. I'm fully in favor of hearing this through and seeing this through to some type of resolution, whatever it may be. However, my concern is the process. I believe the process, if somebody feels aggrieved by a decision that was made, their process should be for them to file a grievance or have their bargaining unit file a grievance on their behalf. I don't believe that's been done at this time, coming in front of a committee. In this manner, I think the committee's blown up a slippery slope here and you're opening up Pandora's Box. So I think we should address this through the process. I think that if a grievance needs to be filed, so be it. And the committee can hear a grievance formally in the process that's been used in the past. And I defer to Attorney Carroll on that as far as the process the committee's using here. I just think you set a dangerous precedence, no matter which way the decision comes out.
Mrs. Carroll?
Normally, when you negotiate or when a teacher is aggrieved, they go through their bargaining unit and they file a grievance, which would go, obviously, this grievance would go to the superintendent and then it would come to the committee. That's the normal process. This is totally abnormal for a teacher to be coming directly to the school committee. And it could open, you know, it could open a precedent where other teachers try to do the same thing. That's something this committee has to decide. You may want to decide tonight to send this back to a grievance process and have the union be negotiating for the individual teachers. That's the way things like this are normally handled.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, Mrs. Benson?
Mr. Cerisi is absolutely right. And the person, now that we've heard half of it and we're coming with our strategy, but the person whom he contacted, I told him to bring it to the committee, made a mistake. He should have been directed then to take it to the union. I'm going to bear on the side of this man taking it to the union. But I have one question to ask, and can I ask him, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Did you ever contact the union? I can't hear you.
Yes. Sure.
Yeah. That was a one-sentence question. Did you contact the union?
Basically, my reason for coming before the committee is that I want to, and made it clear to everybody from the very beginning when this happened, that I don't want this to be an adversarial relationship, that I don't want to have this kind of relationship with the school department, with the school, with the superintendent, with the school board, that I wanted to resolve this amicably. And I had asked right from the very first day that this happened, I mean, can we just get together and talk about this on an informal basis and see if we can resolve it without getting into a formal dispute, whether a legal or was a grievance process? I mean, it's just not, it's not the way I want to do things. I think that the, I was operating under the assumption that the school committee was operating in what they thought was the best, the best interest of the town, which was fiscally. But they didn't know all the circumstances of what led up to this situation. And I wanted to have an opportunity to explain how this came to pass before I pursued some kind of a formal adversarial dispute, legal dispute on this issue. Because it's a matter, I mean, the attorney for the school committee, I'm sorry, I don't, can't read the names, I don't have my glasses on, but, I mean, we're talking about what's legal, what's legally allowable. I mean, it's legally allowable to deny my salary, but it's also legally allowable to give me the step increases that were offered. That's also legal. So, I mean, it can work either way. Basically, the school committee has the option to do whatever they want on this issue. I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Benson, continue.
You know, I was in complete agreement with you when you came last week. And the thing that I wanted to see carried out, because there are some missing links in when we decided to not honor third steps. And I remember clearly as stating in that same meeting, but that member isn't on the board now. So that takes care of that. But once I thought that we have a bargaining union, just as he brought out, and believe me, it's not turning, because I think you should get your money. But if they are taking union dues out of your paycheck, the proper procedure is to go to your union. Are you in the bargaining union?
Yeah, I assume I am. Everybody is, you have to.
He's in the union.
All I have to say is on that-
Pay what is known in the union, I call it a maintenance fee. Don't pay the full amount, but you pay the amount if they are going to represent you. Am I correct?
All members are in the bargaining unit, Mrs. Benson.
But you have members who do not participate, and it became a federal law that you could decide what type of member you wanted to be. Am I correct?
We have a close shot. Every single teacher has to be a member of the union.
I beg to differ, in which you bring that back, because federal law, you cannot make a person join a bargaining union. But you can have them, and not do, Mr. Welch, you can have them to pay-
Pay the dues.
Something akin to a maintenance fee. Where this man could go to the union and present his problems.
It's in the contract. It's part of the contract, Mrs. Benson.
I know it's part of the contract, but then there's part of a state law. And just as she was giving the state law, I'm entitled to give the state law. I am entitled.
That's fine.
Okay, so you're putting one thing above another. I asked if he was, union dues was being taken out. Mrs. Carroll is the attorney for the school committee. She understands what I'm saying. She very well understands, because both of us were in the White, in the State House, they think they're the White House up there, when things like this came up. And it's nothing wrong with me asking him if he belongs to the bargaining union.
Nobody said that was. Mr. Chairman? Just a second.
You didn't say it, but you didn't give the attorney a chance to ask my question. And she's the attorney for the school committee, not one or two persons.
Dr. Thornton, you had something to say?
Sure, just a few fast thoughts. Obviously, having spent some time thinking about this and hearing the different sides of it, I fully understand what the committee said last year about step 1, step 2.
I do too, yeah, I'm sitting at the table.
In the hiring process, as you can imagine, sometimes we get different nuances or finalists that come to us that certainly, you know, have merit. In this case, I believe that member serves, we has three step-
Point of order, Mr. Chair, please. I, respectfully, Dr. Thornton, I think we ought to stick on the, first of all, because I welcome your comments. We're gonna continue with this or not, okay? I think the discussion should be, to some degree, is, I think, first of all, we asked him to come back, okay, to discuss this publicly in the last meeting.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
To circle around, okay, to say, we're gonna send them back to make a grievance.
Just a second, please, on the point of order.
Is-
Yes, Mrs. Avizado. What is your point of order?
Superintendent was interrupted. Can he please finish his statement? And can we please raise our hands and be recognized so that we have an order in this meeting?
I can call the point of order anytime. I don't have to have my hands written.
Just kept talking, wait for a ruling from the chair.
Can we, can we just dispense with this, Mr. Mudge, and have Dr. Thornton just make his points to Mrs. Benson's statements so that we can move forward?
He's gonna continue forward, that's fine. We're not gonna terminate that.
I wasn't trying to terminate.
No, I just wanted to make it clear, we're not terminating the conversation.
Dr. Thornton, would you please continue?
I was simply trying to make the point that I am understanding of the committee's need to be fiscally prudent. As you have hires that come before you, you get different circumstances. In this circumstance, I did make the call for the step threes. I totally understand Attorney Carroll's interpretation, but given what I had at that moment in time, that was the call I made and I stand by it. That's all.
Thank you.
Would you clarify for me, the call I made and I stand by it, is that for the third step?
The attorney has told you, you-
No, I'm talking about your own moral conscience.
I'll be happy to answer your question if I can speak.
Okay, I'm gonna let you speak.
Thank you. The attorney has told you, you do not have to award service that is out of state. In my contact with these individuals, I did. That was my determination. I did recommend a step three. Recommend is the word I would use here.
Now, I have a follow-up to that question. You stated that you were going to stand by what you said. So that means that you told the gentleman he would be on the third step. But the attorney has changed your mind. Could you answer that?
No, no.
No.
Attorney has changed his mind. If I could answer the question? Since it's past you and Dr. O'Jay coming online together, we've had a process now where we meet finalists for jobs. We greet them, talk about the district, say hello. I get some background, Mrs. Gardner, about what step they made beyond. Typically, I would say something to the effect of, you know, welcome. I'll talk about district and say, based on your experience, I'm recommending a step blank for the school committee. After that time, in this circumstance, you have to also understand, school committee meetings don't always perfectly align with the opening of school. In this case, these folks had to go to a new teacher orientation. And in that process, HR had a process in place for many years, but long before us, where they filled out a form, if you will, which Mr. Ibel spoke to last time, talking about teacher name, step, et cetera, it was all in like a form, if you will. So I think that is where maybe some of the confusion might have lied. But yes, based on what I saw at the time, I recommended a step three.
I'm gonna defer to the other members, and may I come back and speak?
Absolutely, Mrs. Benson. Mr. Mudge, please.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I think we ought to hear this out because he was here and we said we would. And second of all, I question whether the arbitration process, which I don't think we should go back to, was probably null and void because he wasn't even in the union, okay? Till he signed the contract. So when he signs the contract, under duress it may be, I mean, it's a fait accompli, okay? What's the union gonna do? Say you shouldn't have signed the contract? So that's really not part of the usual, I don't think, okay? Dr. Thornton, I applaud you for sticking by your guns here. And I, you know, not being here on August 30th when we had that meeting, I attempted to get the meeting on the Internet, as you may know, to see if I could review the discussion that took place that night because I had some concerns relative to this issue. Unfortunately, you know, I couldn't look at that. So in regards to that, then I'd like to ask a few questions because it seems to me, Dr. Thornton, in good faith, very shortly, within a day or two, it seems to me, that you recommended, okay, that he was gonna get this third step. So it seems to me, I don't know when the school committee gave you direction otherwise, okay? In terms of saying, no, you don't hire a person at a first, second, or third step. But certainly, it seems to me that when you came to the school committee meeting, you've got that. And apparently, some school committee members had advised earlier, and I'm not sure the timeframe that that took place, that we should only hire these, you know, the teachers at step one. Now, I don't know how all that happened within three or four days, but I think you brought forth a good recommendation. And in fact, as I say, I applaud you for that. And I think possibly, without seeing the minutes from the meeting, that this thing came too fast, like a snowball going downhill, okay, all of a sudden. Because I personally feel that, number one, as we said in executive session, we do not have to, or we said in executive session-
You don't talk about executive session.
Well, we just, it was just repeating what we said and Mrs. Carroll just said it. There is no requirement that you cannot recognize out-of-state service. You could have 20 years in out-of-state, you don't have to, but you, you know, you're not, you can, doesn't say you have to. Also, the fact is, the gentleman has some 15 or 20 years of life experiences that goes along with this, which I believe, not knowing how you made your decision, you considered his life experiences as part of this. And I think if you look at Commissioner Gist, they're trying to get other people from, out of other school districts, I mean, other professional people into the, into the teaching profession, that may have 10, 15 years of math or science or anything else. Are we sending them the message that you're gonna come in at step one? We're not gonna recognize that? I believe that you probably made some sort of a judgment saying, hey, that 15 years or so is worth something and you decided that it was worth at least three steps. And again, I applaud you for that. So I'm gonna make a motion that we extend to Mr. Ibel, and only him, because he's the only one that came forward, okay? That we give him a step three, okay? As we originally thought that he had had. So I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Ibel be granted-
I'm not through with the discussion. I've got a little something to say, but I've been waiting.
Okay.
I'm going along with your motion, but I just-
Okay, yeah, you can talk about the motion.
I don't think we're through discussing.
I would like to make a motion then that we approve a step three salary for Mr. Ibel, based on the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, is there a second on Mr. Mudge's motion?
Going back retroactively.
Yeah, retroactively.
Not starting now, but going back to when he was hired.
Right.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Thornton.
To be fair to the committee, I gotta really be honest. It was crystal clear to me, step one and two was the conversation. That goes back to when we talked about the early retirement incentive. So I don't wanna give anyone the impression this was a last-minute thing. It was crystal clear, on my call, I recommended a step three, knowing they said step one and two, just to be clear.
But you could have given a two there.
Excuse me, Mr. Mudge. Mrs. Avizado?
Yes, regarding what Dr. Thornton just said, it was, and Mr. Mudge's question of when it happened, it was in an earlier executive session that the school committee had discussed that with Dr. Thornton. And I think what happened was, we got pressed for time, and there wasn't a lot of time between when the recommendation was made and when we needed to bring the teachers on because school was starting the next day, if I believe that was the situation. So it was kind of a last-minute situation in that regard. We needed to get the teachers into the classroom the very next day after the meeting. But my concerns are this. I want all hires, new hires that we have coming into the, to apply to the district, to receive written notification that all elements of their job offer, including level of compensation, term, all of those things, is contingent about school committee approval. And I know Dr. Thornton's already working towards that, or we discussed that already. But that's a concern of mine, and I'd like that to happen as soon as possible. And it sounds like there is some confusion as to whether or not employees were actually told that or understood that. And particularly, you, you weren't a teacher, you came from another profession. If you had been a teacher for years, you may have already been familiar with the fact that school committee approval is usually required or needed. Just sort of a miscommunication that happened here. The only thing I'm reluctant about is doing this outside the grievance process, only because in terms of making this a precedent. So my concern is to narrow this decision down to the situation that we're faced with right now, which is an unusual one, and I don't think will occur again, but that's my concern. As well as, Mr. Cerisi had brought that up before, I think that's a very valid concern. So that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Cerisi.
Mr. Chairman, as I said earlier, my biggest concern here is the process that the committee's following right now. I think you're setting a precedence. You're going up a slippery slope here, and I think you've heard from Attorney Carroll what the process should be, as is outlined in the contract, the teacher's contract, of what the process is. If a teacher or an employee files a grievance, I don't consider that an adversarial thing or an adversarial relationship. If somebody feels they've been aggrieved by some, something, that's what the grievance process is for, to be utilized, to have a formal hearing, to have a formal grievance hearing, and render a formal decision. What we're doing right now is opening Pandora's box. And my bet is, is that if the committee decides to approve this, you'll have other teachers coming before this committee within the next couple of months, and rightfully so. I don't blame them. They should come before this committee and argue their case. Therefore, you're circumventing the whole collective bargaining agreement by doing what you're doing right now. Again, I can, I would certainly like to entertain this discussion further. I would, and if the committee made an error or some miscommunication had taken place, I would fully consider reversing the decision that this committee fully made. Follow the process. You're not following the process. I hear a lot of talk about process, and now you're just arbitrarily applying different rules and processes as you see fit. So I'm gonna offer an amendment to the main motion that's on the floor, that the committee asked, the committee request the employee and the superintendent to follow the process, the grievance process that's outlined in the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We didn't complete the other motion. We already have a motion on the floor.
We have to vote on the amended motion first, Mrs. Benson.
But he had a motion on the floor, and according to Robert's Rule of Order, he will have to either withdraw his motion and we consider a new one. Is that the decision, Attorney Carroll?
Mr. Cerisi, you made an amendment to the original motion. You can vote the amendment up or down, and then you would vote on the motion.
That part is yes. I understood him to say he was making a motion to be amended.
Right, so you need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the main motion.
And there are two amendments.
Mrs. Page.
All right, lots of thoughts here that I've had. I am concerned about the precedent that we're setting because, because not only are we not following the union precedent, but our grievance procedure, but we're also not following our chain of command of BH, that everything is supposed to come up through the principal and then through the superintendent and then to us. I think the superintendent has made his recommendation pretty clear that he would support what you're saying. Now, I don't, it's not supposed to be, even under our policy, that it's supposed to be an adversarial, an adversarial-
Process.
Yeah, thank you. Turping over my words. When I, when I said last time we had this on the agenda, that I wanted to bring this to the agenda, it was because I wanted more information. I wanted to find out what had happened after what you said. But I didn't think of the, at that point, I didn't know the process that had gone, had been gone through or hadn't been gone through. If things at the superintendent level are such that, I mean, obviously, it sounds like probably things have already gone through at the principal level. So this would be something that go right to the superintendent level. And if the superintendent follows the recommendation that he's just made, then it sounds like it wouldn't even come to us, that it was recommended. If the superintendent recommends a step three and then Mr. Ibel goes along with it, then the only thing that comes on our agenda is, again, is a consent agenda item. It's not, wouldn't be something that we would need to have a separate hearing on. It would just be like it was before. My recollection of this is when it was on the August 30th meeting, was that, I don't remember any discussion about this. I do remember that, and I don't remember if we came here with it drawn through, if we came here and we got here and it was told we had a different fee scheduled that time. There have been many times that we come here and we basically are told that whoever's salary is on here, that it was an error, and here we go, this is the corrected salary. I do remember that later on, on September 14th, and I looked this up in the minutes, we did have a discussion about step one and step twos that Mrs. Brudel brought up. And I said at that meeting that I did not want to have us being bound by step one and step two because I knew that there would be times that Dr. Thornton would want to hire people who were of, who had a lot of really great experience and might be higher. And so we purposely didn't vote on that being, I mean, being something that we voted upon. We all said, yes, we didn't want to tie Dr. Thornton's hands. And that was in the September 14th minutes. So that being said, it would be the sort of thing of, right now, while I am all in favor of having this on a consent agenda and we be approved, that you get the step three, I think we do need to follow the process. And I think that the next step would be going through Dr. Thornton and then coming back to us on a consent agenda and we saying, that was fine.
May I say something to that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. You know, the procedure, I'm a little lost on what the procedure is. And I understand it's, there's a lot of formality, but I've been working here since September. I've been waiting a long time for this conversation. I've been waiting very patiently, and I've been waiting without getting angry about what happened to me because I'm assuming it's gonna be resolved, and I've been trying to keep my focus on the kids and on teaching. That's not always easy when your salary's at stake. I have spoken to the union, I have spoken to my mentor, I have spoken to my department head, I've spoken to the principal, I've spoken to the superintendent, and I've tried, you know, spoken to the chairman of this committee and tried to speak to the former chairman of this committee. I don't know what else I can do as far as following the proper procedure. I've done everything that I've been asked to do, and I was told that the way, the best way to proceed would be to come last time and ask to be put on the agenda. That's how I proceed with this, so that I don't get into a full-blown dispute, yes.
Mr. Cerisi.
File a grievance, that's the procedure. That's the next step for you to do. That should have been the first step that you should have done. And as far as speaking to the former chairman of the committee, that would be me. And yes, I did receive your request to speak to me, and the information that I sent back was, follow the procedure. If you feel you've been aggrieved by, I'm one person. I can't change the decision of an entire committee. I'm one person, I have one vote, regardless of what my title is. If you feel you've been aggrieved by the committee, follow the process, follow the procedure, file a grievance. That was what I had sent back to you in return to your request for a meeting. I'm not gonna have a private offline meeting to discuss something outside of the process. Follow the process. And I don't know what else to say from there, you know? And as far as any secret conversation or anything of that matter, this, Mrs. Page, you would remember, when the superintendent first proposed to this committee the early retirement incentive, during that discussion is when the committee said, sounds good. It was an executive session discussion, sounds good. We would like to see recommendations for steps one and two so we can achieve that savings between a step 10 and a step 1. All of this discussion took place on the record at formal school committee meetings. Nothing took place off the record. And again, I'm trying to follow the procedure, I'm trying to ask the committee to follow the procedure. I think what's happened here is really, like I said, you're opening Pandora's box, and I know there are other teachers that are sitting in the audience tonight. And if you approve this tonight, they're gonna come forward, and they should. They should. They have no reason not to. Follow the proper procedure. That's all I'm asking the committee to do. Vote up or down, but follow the proper procedure when you do.
Mr. Thompson, and then we're gonna go and vote on the amendment.
I'm just kidding, I had my hand up, too.
Mr. Thompson.
I'm a new kid on the block, and I am just as, you know, trying to learn the procedures as you are. So please bear with me. I'm looking at Article 25, the grievance procedure. I believe that's relevant to this case. And I'm reading down through it, and with the exception of the fact that it says, to put it in writing, it seems like you've gone through level one and level two. You've gone up to the superintendent, and level three is to come to the school committee. And I think that's the step we're at, with the exception of that the whole thing didn't go in writing. And I'm just wondering if I could suggest- And I'm just wondering if I could suggest to just put this in writing, I think you'd get the sense of the committee of where this is going to go eventually. I personally, I remember the case of, that was mentioned to us, that 1984 Romano case, where an employee made decisions in his life based on something that was given to him in writing by the, by an official of the government. And it was, it later went into arbitration in the court, and it was overturned. And I, I remember all the way back to reading about that, how unfair that was. I just felt it was an egregious, unfair, bait-and-switch kind of situation. And I've felt this way about your case ever since it first came up to me. Now, maybe it didn't come up to me in the right way. I'll, I'll grant them that. But what the case represents is what I've been saying all along. We are better than this. We want to hire the best people that we can get to teach our kids in this school, and I think you're one of the best. And for every day that you have gone along with this thing going on inside you, and at the same time trying to keep your motivation up, I applaud you. I, I'm happy that you came up and you spoke truth to power, as you did last week. I, I hope that nothing unseemly happens as a result of this, but perhaps, as I say, maybe you can put this into writing, run it through the steps. In that way, Larry, and I agree with him on this, let's, let's follow the procedure, but let's get this thing solved, because I have a quotation, it's not slippery slope, it's justice delayed, is justice denied. Thank you.
Mr. Mudge, and then Dr. Thornton, and then we'll vote on the amendment. Mr. Mudge.
I, I agree with Mr. Thompson. However, I would say that, in fact, the process is going to, one, that he came publicly to the school committee, which is on record, that's like in writing, my way of thinking. The school committee did say, we would, you know, discuss this, okay, in writing, basically, verbally in front of us, and we said, we would hear it, okay? But we've heard Dr. Thornton's testimony in terms of what he thought, you know, was right. And, you know, to go back and say that we have to go through the grievance procedure all over again is, you know, really disrespectful to this stuff. And, and so, I, I do agree that we, we maybe made the problem by saying, we're going to hold a meeting. So, I think we have a responsibility to live up to that. It doesn't say, we can't, okay? We can't hear it. It says, there's a policy, and policies, there's always an exception to policy, but if, if there was a policy broken, then it was us to grant him a public hearing to discuss this matter publicly. So, he's done everything he can do. And so, I, I would vote against the motion, and, and if there's a precedent that's been set, it was that we accepted him to come here. Now, we can't go and tell him to go away again.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton.
Just for clarity's sake, we have not yet engaged in the grievance process to do that. Mr. Ibel would go to the association president or the building rep, and they would file a formal grievance to me. That's a formal paper we do, that's the grievance process. So, Mr. Thompson, that would be what some folks here are asking, to actually do the written grievance process, is what they're asking.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so, Dr. Thornton, level one of the grievance procedure hasn't even taken place yet formally?
No.
Okay. And I just have one more question for Attorney Carroll. Is, in this process that we're following right now, are we following the collective bargaining agreement process for a grievance?
For a grievance, yes.
No.
The process that this committee's following right now.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Last, last person, Mrs. Benson.
I'm reminded of two people going to Providence and crossing there the answer bay. One in a rowboat, and in one in a cabin cruiser. Last week, the gentleman brought to us, I was very well set on the fact of holding up, because Dr. Carroll didn't have all this here last week, if she did, she didn't speak out, of standing by our leader, who had promised you the 3%. We seem to have stopped in East Greenwich and every little nuck and tuck in the trip to Providence from North Kingstown by water. Now, there are some things. There are some things. The more you talk, the more questions I could ask. The gentleman came last week, two weeks ago. We told him, come back. We could not take action according to the open meeting law. Now, he's back. Mr. Cerisi, you made a good point about the process. You wasn't here last week at the last meeting, and I said, I said when you said it, yes, you were right, the process. But the name man never was told what the process was. You, Mr. President, told the man, because I asked, to bring it to the committee. You know, our word is worth something, and our moral character. A special privilege to speak as a member. So, I'm going to finish, Ms. Abadana. Now, the gentleman did what we said. There is a mistake on the interpretation of when this was handled, because Dr. Thornton, Dr. School Committee Lawyer, and Mr. Cerisi, and all of you who are former members. At that same meeting, I stated that it takes a teacher three years to become a teacher. That was related to first-step teachers. I also mentioned, how are we going to bring up the test scores with all inexperienced teachers? This isn't the first time this, not you, but this conversation's been up. You go home, you say what's morally right, what's morally wrong, and I came back and I said it in executive meeting. It said the minutes was closed, not my mouth. So, take me to executive, take me to the ethics commission, any way you like. I came in here, and I think I'm, I'm going to do it, that Dr. Thornton's word means something. And let's vote and give this gentleman his money. I didn't have your resume. I didn't know you had written for the Harvard Review, and that was one of the things we fell down on in the NECAP scores. And that was the thing that Dr. Thornton was looking for. I don't know how actively he sought, but you were the answer to a prayer. Because NECAP scores come before children now. And you were the answer to a prayer, that we could get someone who could really work and bring, have experience, and help us. Now, we haven't heard from our personnel director, our human resource director. We haven't heard from her. And wait a minute, Dr. Thornton, let me finish. Where does she fit into this? Who did you get this from? Who told you you would be the third step? When you went to sign your paper?
It was initially offered by Dr. Thornton, when I met with him on August 5th, and then when I came to, I was, I was basically offered the job on July 30th, met with Dr. Thornton on August 5th, when I was offered the salary with the step, with the step, and then on the 20th, I came to the, so it was a verbal offer from Dr. Thornton on the 5th, and then on the 20th, it was the written document with the offer that he had tendered me.
And did you?
What looked like a contract to me.
Did you go and sign your contract?
Yeah.
With the personnel director?
Yep.
And nobody told you?
Nobody.
You know, much ado about nothing. The great man is the person who can admit they made a mistake. And not spend all our time trying to make everybody, trying to make everybody and everything look like they're wrong. Give the man the money. The superintendent had him to do it. I stand behind him, and I stand behind you, Ms. Gardner. And if you made a mistake, please, don't do it again. The man say he went to you. We learn from our experiences. May I ask you another question? How many years have you had, I will use the term civilian service, not educational service? What was your other experience? I haven't seen your resume.
No. Well, I'll go, I'll go backwards, because that is usually the way you do a resume. So, the last 20-something years, I've been a journalist. I started in 1984. I guess it's longer than 20 years, almost 25 years. I worked in a variety of publications. I worked as a newspaper reporter. I covered presidential campaigns for daily, small daily newspapers. And then I specialized in legal journalism, and was editor of a national legal newspaper, newspaper for lawyers. And then the last year before I came here, I was writing for the law schools, mostly for BU and for Harvard Law School.
Very impressive.
And then before that, I worked in an office for a few years.
Congratulations, Dr. Thornton, you hit the jackpot.
Okay. Are you then, Mrs. Benson?
No. So, let's cut all this out. I went along with Mr. Cerisi on the union, but you didn't even know you had a union until after you got your face stuffed. Do they take it out of the first face stuffed, or what, Ms. Gardner?
That's untrue.
No, you too busy trying to make fun of what I say.
There's no need for that.
I don't care what you say.
That's evident.
Treat the man right.
That's evident, but you don't need to pick on her help.
I'm not picking on her. I asked her a question, and she couldn't answer it. I'm not picking on our help. We got some good help.
The only thing that's stopping this from going forward, Mrs. Benson, is you.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Thank you. First, we're going to vote on the motion to amend. If the clerk would please read the motion to amend.
The amendment is that the committee requests the employee and superintendent to follow the grievance process. That was made by Larry Cerisi, seconded by Linda Abenzado.
I'd like a roll call vote.
I'm pleased to hear that.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
No.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Abenzado.
Yes.
Okay, now we need to vote on the original.
Did you announce the motion and the vote?
Excuse me?
Did you announce, go through the regular procedure, with announcing?
It was four, three, and defeating.
Motion defeated, four to three.
Now, now we vote on Mr. Mudge's motion. Would you please read Mr. Mudge's motion?
Motion by Bill Mudge to grant Bill Ibel a step three as recommended by the superintendent, seconded by Joe Thompson.
I think there was a slight addition, retroactive.
Retroactive to?
He put in retroactive.
Oh, yeah. Retroactive to when he started.
Did you also not include that just to Mr. Ibel?
I just used him, yeah.
Right.
I was used to him, yes.
Did you get that, School Committee Clerk?
Yes, Bill Ibel, yes.
A discussion on that motion, please. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my understanding, I think we're at the point now where the committee's decided to circumvent the collective bargaining agreement process and go ahead and vote on this, so therefore, the discussion is somewhat changed to the discussion of the main motion. It's my understanding that Attorney Carroll has already informed the committee that there's nothing requiring them to give these steps, and that the committee has acted well within the law and well within the committee's authority. It's also my understanding that there was a request made from the administration on what it would cost the taxpayers to give these steps. I don't know who has that information.
Is that a year? What's it going to cost a year?
Yeah, I think he said.
Dr. Thornton, would you please read that?
Sure. Essentially, over the, the question was asked, over the life of a 10-step career, step one, step 10, if you were to start at a three instead of a one, what was the projected differential or cost? And essentially, we're looking at approximately $62,000 for each of the three individuals, so total of 188 range, I believe.
So, it's.
Over the life of 10 years.
So, excuse me, Mr. Mudge, I have the floor at this time, please. So, my understanding is that over the, over a 10-year span, it's an additional cost to the taxpayers of approximately $190,000.
Just one correction, the current motion's only talking about one person.
Right.
Which I would have to comment on later, but go ahead.
So, it's $60,000, approximately $60,000 per person over a 10-year span is what it's going to cost the taxpayers in salary if the committee votes to approve this motion. And the committee is, from my understanding, from our attorney, the committee is under no requirement to stop somebody at a step three rather than a step one. And the committee has acted well within its authority in, in reducing this to a step one, and we're under no legal obligation to stop this individual at a step three. So, we're going to spend $60,000 of taxpayer money that we're not required to spend. I just want to make sure we're clear on that before we vote. No, the committee's, the committee's having a discussion right now.
Okay. I just wondered if I can say something about it at some point.
The committee is going to vote to approve $60,000 of taxpayer money that they do not have to spend. There's no requirement to spend. Sure, you can spend it. What I would like to know is, as we continue in the conversations of the budget process, I'm hearing the rhetoric of zero budgets and negative two budgets and all that good stuff. I would really like to see the math on how we're going to do that when we're handing out $60,000 that we don't need to hand out of taxpayer money. I really want to see it.
Mr. Chairman? Just a moment, please. Mrs. Abenzado.
Just following up on that, there's a concern as well that other individuals with experience come forward and be given the same situation in terms of being put at a higher step for experience.
Mrs. Page, please.
Well, I, I understand where you get your $60,000 number. However, for one year, the difference between a step one and a step two is not $60,000. It's only a little bit over $5,000. So, we're not talking about this year, it costing us $60,000. That's over 10 years. And so, it's one of those things of, yes, you do pay more for experience. Yes, it will cost you in the long run, but the value to our students that that gives is far more than what I'm going to sit here and, and say, oh, I'm going to worry about $60,000 over 10 years, because we're talking about this year, and so this year, we're talking a little bit over $5,000, and we're talking about one person. Now, I know that there were other people who, Dr. Thornton recommended it as step three, and we started at step one. And I would hope that they would go through the process of, of what we've done. And I know, I, I know that, as you ask people not to speak, I would ask the same. I would, I know that I argued for process, but after what Mrs. Benson said about how Mr. Ibel has talked to the principal, he has talked to the superintendent, I rethought what I was, and I thought, I'm not going to make this jump-through hoops for the purpose of jumping through hoops. So, each case, I would take a look at individually. I would want the next person who comes back. I know that there was another person, because I received email in the fall from one of the principals who argued that their teacher should be at a step three because of other experience. And at that point, we had several emails back and forth that I said to, suggested that we should have followed the step three. I know we don't have to do this, but it is the sort of thing, if it's really difficult to argue when you have your superintendent who makes a promise and says, this is what you're going to be at. And I think that's my toughest thing here, and that would distinguish this from every other case that people are going to say, well, why didn't? other case that people are gonna say, well, why didn't you give them for this experience? It's when you have somebody who's, the superintendent, who is the person who hires our teachers, and then we approve it, to, to sit down and say, you're gonna be at this step, and then later on, take that away. And so, I think that's what distinguishes this from everything else.
Mr. Mudge?
I couldn't agree with you more, Ms. Page. And I think it sends a message too, to, to other people that may wanna come into our, into our town and teach. I think perhaps this is one of the reasons why people want charter schools, you see? Because they can come in and they can bring in people with years of experience to teach and get the best people there, okay? And I think the message you were saying is, we value your experience, and I certainly do, and I think that, as Mrs. Page has said, I think it'll pay off, the dividends will be in the kids and in the future, and it'll pay off itself many, many times. And had the prior school committee addressed this thing in a timely manner since last August, we wouldn't be here today. So, I'm fully gonna support the motion.
Mr. Thompson?
To me, the essential thing that distinguishes this case is that Mr. Ibel was offered the job in writing. He was given an offer in writing, and, and I think that's gonna distinguish it. And as Kim has already said, and I agree with her, this, I don't think we're gonna have a whole line of teachers coming up and saying, well, I deserve a step three. Were they given an offer in writing? I don't think so. If they were, I think we should, we should honor the, the promise. And perhaps we should look in our policy manual and figure out a way that we can, by the time we go to an individual in writing and offer them a certain amount of salary, that the school committee has agreed to that, so that we don't have to go back to them afterwards and say, oh, sorry, we, you know, we're gonna take you down. And especially after they've reported for duty, turned down other jobs, and here they are.
Did they call a motion?
Just-
Sorry?
Very briefly, I, and I, I hope I don't get this wrong. It seems, it sounded to me like I heard that the superintendent was told not to hire at steps higher than one and two, and that the superintendent ignored that directive and did hire Mr. Ibel at step three. If I've got that right, and I don't, I'm not sure, but to me, that sounds like insubordination. And I'm just reminded of an award-winning principal that was marched out of this school because of alleged insubordination.
Okay.
And that really irritates me.
Okay. Dr. Thornton?
Just for clarity's sake, it was a very collaborative conversation about steps one and two. And as you recall from the lawyer, Mr. Thompson, the processes I recommend, school committee approves, and I'm sorry you still have difficulty with the prior principal or the fact that you thought I turned off Mr. Ibel's email, but it's simply not the case, Mr. Thompson.
Mrs. Avanzato?
Yes, when we had the conversation with Dr. Thornton, we asked him just to come back to us if he wanted to hire at higher than a step one and two. We recognize that there are certain circumstances where the superintendent needs to hire someone at a higher rate, whether it be because it's a particularly complicated job, or he does wanna recognize a certain individual's experience, or whatever that may be. It was a timing issue where he didn't get to come back to us before he did that, and we caught out by surprise by it. That's the way it, it happened. I agree with some of Mr. Thompson's comments. I think we need to address this on a policy level going forward and make sure that employees are told, because that is the nature of getting a job at a school department. You have to be approved by the school committee. Nothing is final until they do so, and that needs to be explained. But I can't support this because I cannot go around the grievance process in this way. I just think it needs to follow a process. It may take slightly longer, not much, but I just think the process needs to be followed.
Okay. We'll take a vote on the, the motion. Can I ask you once again to read the motion, please?
Okay, the motion was to grant Bill Ibel a step three retroactively as recommended by the superintendent.
Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Mudge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Larry Cerise?
No.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welsh?
No.
Linda Avanzato?
No.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Going back to the agenda, school budget, 2011-12. Dr. Thornton?
In terms of the budget, last week, I gave you an email talking about how I had more conversations with the state around what the state funding could be. I talked to you about how, based on what I'm hearing, I wanted to revise my projection of state aid to minus three percent in state aid. From that, we gave you a new sheet, a new one of these, if you will. And in this, I basically took away some of my proposed additions, totaling what I believe to be approximately three percent of less state aid. Essentially, what I'm doing is, I'm trying to right-size the budget, given a forecast of minus three state aid. So, with that, I think we're back to the place, you know, having a conversation of, you know, where you wanna go with the budget and, you know, if you have any thoughts or considerations for reductions, additions, et cetera.
Thank you. Certainly, we'll need time to, to review this based on the information that you provided us here. What, what do you, what could you say off the, off the top of your head, if you will, that another one percent negative would do to the BEP or, or et cetera? I realize you only went to minus one. Where do you think we'd get hit?
In terms of if you wanted to go minus two, and take more, as you can see, minus one, we're talking about, you know, the student activities, the sports, et cetera. When you get to that point, we're really talking about, I don't have really much else to, to go to unless you wanna violate class size. So, I could make some larger classes at the K-five level. I could do some more reductions at the high school, or high school reductions in classes. For example, right now, we run honors and AP, et cetera. And we may still run, say, honors chem if it has, say, you know, twelve students in it, because you wanna run honors classes. You know, if you were to, you know, go minus two, maybe I'm not running honors sections at twelve. Maybe we're running honors only at twenty, or twenty-two, or twenty-four. So, maybe you would have to tell me, you know, cut two-hundred thousand dollars out of the high school. The challenge of the high school is, students select their courses around now. We don't get the schedule run until the springtime. Your budget process is long gone and done by the time we're running a schedule. So, I'd, you'd have to tell me, you know, cut from the high school program X dollars. I'd figure it out later in the springtime. K-five, it's a little more linear. We know what we have, we roll the kids forward, we see sections, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. But, it's certainly, I, I could, I could, you know, model some, some reductions at the K-five level, or the middle level for that matter. Also, one more piece to correct for the big sheet, if you will. I believe it's number three. I had modeled for you and talked to you earlier in the year about the pupil personnel director and the salary. To really do it correctly, talking to Attorney Carroll, I would wanna, you know, have that conversation under putting your contract back on in March. But, you know, that dollar amount is there, that was part of my, you know, budget conversation, but to be accurate, I would wanna, you know, have that in a contract conversation in March. Just to clear that up.
Okay. Has anyone from the committee or the public come forward, Dr. Thornton, and made suggestions of other areas that we should consider that you haven't considered?
I actually had one from, Mrs. Page and I talked briefly this week. One conversation was with our class size sections at K-five, which you have in one of your attachments. We like to keep our numbers at optimum levels, you know, not, not too big, especially in grade one. However, there are two opportunities in grade one where I could take a grade one out of Forest Park and a grade one out of Hamilton. I hope that the class sizes are around nineteen-twenty. That's before you get the influx of the kids who go full-day K, private, and come back. So, it's kinda one of those things where you can take two teachers now, take a hundred and thirty K off your, your budget or fund balance, if you will, but you may have a situation where in August, we're adding it back. But as numbers stand today, you could do it, but it's tight.
But that wouldn't bring you to a minus two?
That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Aside from that conversation, no, I had no other definitive, concrete suggestions.
So, for folks to make suggestions about a minus two with identifying the problem that the taxpayers are put upon, and that the problem is that people want no tax increase, they want reduction in taxes, with no one coming forward with suggestions on who is going to be upset? Is it going to be the taxpayers? Is it going to be athletics supporters? Is it going to be music, or art, or the AP courses? Someone is gonna have to lose someplace in order to get to a minus two. And at the last meeting, I was chided, and I'm gonna take this time to, to talk about this, on the four items that were put on that were noneducational for information purposes to go out and seek outside bids for the idea to be able to see what it would cost us to go outside for food service, for outside grounds maintenance, for mini buses, et cetera. And I, I said, you know, we're here to educate, we're here to find ways of saving money so that we can keep our educational program intact. Everybody wants somebody else to take the cut, without exception. But nobody comes forward and says, why don't we do this? Okay? So, at the last meeting, I said, and I took the heat for it, that we would go out and get bids on these things for the purposes of having the knowledge to know in a noneducational area where we might be able to save, to save the taxpayers' dollars. Not saying we gotta have a minus two, but I have no idea how we're gonna get there. And I think it's everyone's, needs to identify that when they say they wanna cut to a minus two, they had better have suggestions on who they expect to get mad at, because the people out there, every, every single item on this budget has an interest, whether it be athletics, activities, AP, you name it. Every, every part of this budget has a group that is concerned about it, and someone has to give up. Someone has to be upset. And if you don't think so, then that's fine. The reality is, tell me what the problem is. The problem is you want lower taxes? Tell me what the solution is. Don't just say, cut two percent, come up with some solutions. Mr. Cerise?
I'll defer to Mrs. Avanzato, she had her hand up. I was trying to block her, but, uh-
Mrs. Avanzato?
I wanted to make a quick point in that, you know, a large percentage of our budget, and I don't even know, probably is over eighty percent, is contractually obligated.
Eighty-six percent personnel, I believe.
Eighty-six percent. And I think we did very well with those contractual obligations. Our teachers were, you know, very willing and made concessions and helped out our budget and this town and our students by doing so. But it needs to be, when you're talking about a two percent decrease in our budget, you're talking about all the non, the only discretionary spending there is. That's a small piece of this budget. Eighty-six percent of it, you can't go back and undo someone's contract. So, you're talking about getting a lot of cuts out of a small area, and it's very much student-impacting areas that you're talking about. So, while I'm certainly, you know, we've, we've got longer to go here in terms of cuts that we can make and should be looking at making, we just have to be a little bit cautious about how we proceed and, you know, it's never an easy thing. It won't be an easy thing again this year, but hopefully, we'll find some areas that don't impact students as much when we look to those areas.
Mr. Cerise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as members that have been on the committee as long as I have and longer, Mrs. Benson and Mrs. Page, they would know that we, this isn't, has unfortunately become an annual exercise for us since two thousand and six and probably before that, as far as the reductions to the budget or things we need to eliminate in the budget. And I will say that during those years, oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine, making some of those reductions weren't that challenging at that time. But as you make those reductions and eliminate things from the budget, year after year, it becomes more challenging as the years go on to find those things to eliminate that won't impact the students' education and extracurricular activities. So, every year, that challenge becomes more and more difficult, and that's, you know, that's common sense. Certainly, I think there are still more things we can look at. And the only question or comment I had is related to the budget, but somewhat of a different topic, and I'll, I'll defer to the superintendent or, or Mr. Draper for this. But to my knowledge, in years past, aside from our budget allocation from the town, separate allocation aside from the, the budget allocation, the district received funding for our CIP. I wanna say, some years, it was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, other years, it was five-hundred-thousand, some years, it was seven-hundred thousand. I would say, all average, it was probably around the five-hundred-thousand-dollar range in years past. To my knowledge, in the last three years, we haven't received any allocation to our CIP. And, and that's, that those are some dollars that have not come to the school district, where we haven't been able to address some building needs, maintenance, not maintenance needs, but repairs, upgrades, and so on and so forth. By not receiving that money, by not addressing those projects, that turns into requests for bonds to, you know, have the dollars to address those. But I just, I just wanted to confirm that, to make sure that, that I am right. Has it been two or three years that we haven't received an allocation to the CIP?
I'll have to take a look. I believe I prepared a report for the committee a couple of weeks ago. I'll, I'll take a look at what the numbers were. I'll, I'll open that up in just a minute.
But it's definitely in the last two years, we haven't received any allocation to the CIP.
The allocations of late have been much less than they were in the past now. Also, when those allocations are housing aid reimbursements, so sometimes they lag behind, but I'll, I'll take a look and let you know what the deal is.
So, my concern is, is that, again, you know, obviously, times are definitely more challenging than they've been in the past, so those allocations of seven-fifty or five-hundred may not be feasible, but we, we've taken a zero in the CIP allocations over the last two years, that I'm sure of. I think the committee should be requesting a separate, and aside from its budget, as part of its budget, but a separate line item, a CIP allocation specifically, or a specific amount request, because I don't believe we've done that, and we have received a zero. And I, I wanna say, and I'm not sure, but I believe that the town council has a, a policy as far as what they're gonna allocate the district, whether it be a percentage or a dollar amount for their CIP, for the CIP, so.
Dr. Thornton?
I will concur with you, and my, my memory is that we did not have an allocation for the CIP. There was money in there from housing reimbursements from the state, but not a CIP allocation from the town, if you will. And as you know, in our conversations, facility, some committee, more than ever, were having, you know, concerns about roofs, windows, et cetera. So, it's something we really need to address.
I had asked you to, to put something on the budget in, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars, so it's some, some way, shape, or form, they need to address it when they approve our budget. Mrs. Page?
Well, as, Mr. Cerise, I don't believe you were able to make the, the town council meeting on January tenth because of your back surgery, but in, during that meeting, the, Mr. Embry gave us a calculated sheet in which he basically said that with the full amount added to the cap, the four-hundred, I mean, the four-point-two-five percent, they were still gonna be, in with all their, they were still gonna have to use their fund balance of four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, that they were going to be in the hole. So, while I would love to have CIP money, and I think it would be something that would be great to have, I don't see this as being the year that we should be asking the town council. I mean, they are in a budget mess just as much as we are. I would rather act collaboratively in this and be looking at, okay, what sort of increase or what sort of budget do we want? I, I don't think that we're gonna be able to go to a minus two percent. I would like to be able to figure out how we're gonna get to zero percent and what we accident, we really want to have if we're going to raise our budget for next year. One of the things that I did ask Dr. Thornton about is if we reduced our elementary school teachers and we took everybody up to- and we took everybody up to the cap in terms of their, of their classrooms, of if we would be able to cut it, teachers. And as he stated just recently, he said 2. I guess the other area, I would say, and, and I know you can't, you said you weren't going to be able to figure this, but just how much is the committee willing to say at our high school level? What is our cap there? Is our cap, I think it's currently, you said 12 students in a class when we run the class?
No, what I'm saying is-
Except for a couple of AP.
The, the AP can vary in what they run. It's truly a judgment call. We sit in the spring and we decide what we're going to run based on, you know, the sections, et cetera. But what I'm saying is, if you put a dollar amount on us for the high school, we'd have to make a tough call on what's not going to run.
And I guess it would be, I would like a recommendation for our budget subcommittee meeting next week as to what would be a realistic approach, that we don't suffer greatly in terms of the classes that we would not have. But what would be a realistic of, okay, this probably wouldn't run if we took our cap up to 15 rather than 12. I don't think that 15 is that much of a difference, but it could be in, in terms of some classrooms running. And that I want to be able to say, we've explored other options that, because I look at your budget ads. And the budget ads that I like, I like the ones that are very much for curriculum, making sure that we have professional development for our teachers, to, to use what we already have and make it better. The, the ones that I'm going to have a harder time with are where we're adding staff that basically, we then take that commitment on for more years than just next year. So, that we're growing our deficit in terms of, of just how much we're taking out of our fund balance. And while I've said that I would consider taking things out of our fund balance, at the same time, I don't want to look at digging us into a hole where we're looking at commitments of staff. Because staff is going to be, you're taking on the commitment of the healthcare, you're taking on the commitment of the pension liabilities, and you don't take that on for just one year. It goes forward with you. And I think it's harder for us to rationalize adding staff when we've had, we've added staff for the last couple of years, but we have continued to shrink students. Now, I know you've explained to us very well as to that the shrinking of the students has not been all in one group. Unfortunately, we haven't had a dip where we've just said, all of the seventh graders suddenly disappeared, and so therefore, we can eliminate a section. That just isn't going to be how it is. But at the same time, when we get it over three years, there must be some place where we can find that we can reduce the staffing level. And that would be where I would say, let's try to find that place. Because it hasn't just been one year. We're now coming up in three. And with the 2011, that could be four. So, that would be where I'd say, we need to figure that out.
That, are you, hold on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Benson?
My recommendation would be, rather than just to say, cut, let's pursue very aggressively consolidation in certain areas. We have not done one thing on consolidation. And that must be not only explored, but put together. And we are talking about all that we need and all that we, we are laying off people. But what drives this is the BEP. And I have asked that we get the budget as related to the BEP. That's the main thing, the best, basic educational program. And as you said, Mr. Chair, our business is education. But in order to have education, there are other things that we need and that we must have. And if we pursue consolidation and let's get the salaries, we keep talking about what's contractual, and I very well understand that. When you make a contract, you stand behind it. And I made contracts for the state for 14 years. But leaving that beside because we cannot change it, change the things that we can and know what we can't. We got a one-year contract remaining. Is it one or two? I don't want to say the wrong thing. How many years left on the contract?
On the teachers?
Yes.
Two. Two more years. Let's share it.
And we're going into a new contract with the auxiliary help. Only thing we can do is to get the BEP, see that it's funded. And let's look at some salaries in administration. And not yours, don't go out, not yours, superintendent. You work every dime, you and Mr. OJ. You work every dime. Did you hear me? Not yours. But let's see. Did you hear me? I just want that to be clear. But there are things we can consolidate. And I think one of the members brought it up. Do a study. Let's do a study on if we have too many employees in this place in administration. See if we can have one person doing one job. School committee, we have an attorney. She puts up more time with the school committee than elected members. There has to be a way, not to put you out of a job, but there has to be a way, because there are some things that we could go with the town, with the town solicitor, and the three of you could work together. That's what I'm talking about. And the fact that you brought it up, Mr. Chair, and I still want to express myself that the lowest people on the totem pole, and of all the things that you want to outsource, the lowest salaries in the department, let's see what we can do with consolidation. There are some things we can consolidate, and I happen to know that. You cannot consolidate a litter or two a class with the board of canvass. And that's as far extreme as I can go. But we can work on consolidation. Everything we have, from TV on down, we have to have our own. Where the day is passed and the money is gone for individualism. I'm going to repeat it, as I've said many times. There is only one window that people put their tax money. And that says the town. So, I'm through. Let's talk about consolidation, and that's my idea to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
Haven't had time to sit with Dr. Dunn and didn't know we had the opportunity to do that. But if you'd like me to come in further, I will come in when we have the budget meeting. And I will give you some clear examples of consolidation.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Mr. Murch?
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to, you know, your recommendations to go out before our condition. You know, I, I don't object to those going out. I do, and I think I tried to make the point is that I thought we should have, have done some in-house work to see if we had a mean, you know, organization, we were down to where we should be, so we know what our level of, that's effort for. See, we're not going to get anybody to tell us what a level of effort is going to be to have a janitorial staff can come in and do these jobs. Those people just won't do that. They'll give you any number to buy in, okay? And I think we, again, we did a study at the high school that said what the level of effort is. And I think those should be, those should be first determined so we know what the level of effort is. Then you could contract them out. So, you know, I say that, you know, you were out on a limb. I don't necessarily agree with that because, you know, I just, my view is just do it in a step, step-by-step fashion, that's all. With respect to the, the asset capitalization plan, and I can mention at the last school committee meeting, okay, that in fact, with your, one of your questions is, those, those costs are not in our budget. And frankly, I think we need to get some legal advice, okay? In fact, the school cap reserve fund, okay, is essentially nonexistent. It doesn't comply with the town charter, okay? It's, it's going by the boards. We need to look at the town charter, okay? We need to look at the current agreement with the school cap reserve fund because what was supposed to have happened for prior years is we're supposed to take, and what they did is they took money from our school fund and put it into the school cap reserve fund. And that, that screws up our budgets from day one, the budgets and the actuals and everything else. And I agree, we should have a line item in there in our normal budget, and it should be integrated into that normal budget. Because what's happened before was the town council would take $500,000, right? They'd put it in the school cap reserve fund, but we couldn't touch it. So, it really wasn't ours. You have to, you know, get on our hands and knees to get it. That doesn't exist anymore. I'm not sure you're aware of it. That's gone away, because I, I've gone to the council and I've gone to the town manager. The fact is, we can spend any money in that school capital reserve plan. It's ours. We don't need school committee approval. And I think we ought to get that cleared away. Maybe we've got to set up something else, but it's ours. And in fact, the, probably the, and, and I think you realize, I may not understand this, several years ago, through some of my efforts, is I had the money put in from the state that they were collecting, throwing it into the town's coffers, okay? That they were collecting on the, you know, the 30 percent. That's now going back into the school, the school cap reserve fund, which it should. So, there's some mechanisms we need to follow that. And the reason why the town council hasn't put a lot of money in the last several years is because as of the beginning of this year, we had a $400,000 surplus in the fund. So, the times are tight. You know, we've had a lot of money going back, and we are sitting on going into at least this year, $400,000, okay? So, I think we really need to look at that and clean that school capital reserve fund up because the school committee has been hosed over the years with that thing, okay? Now, I think you say we need to do some things. We certainly do, because I think you started this, okay, and, and we've got to go forward with it. I think we'll find out through consolidation and IT that we're going to pick up at least $150,000, maybe $200,000. I personally believe that, and that won't give up one function, okay, that's, that, that will impact the school department. I feel that we've left several hundred thousand dollars off the table with the Jamestown tuition rate that we need to examine again solely because, in my opinion, we don't have a contract in place for 2010. Nor did the tuition rate that we approved, as certain people approved, does not, does not comply with the current contract. Because, and I would ask superintendent, okay, in your budget, do we show the receipt of any funds for school debt service? The current contract that we signed, or what, what it went through, doesn't have one penny for debt service back to the district. Is that correct?
Mr. Draper?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so now, yeah, go ahead.
Not, not to cut you off. To clarify, the rate assumes no capital. The agreement itself hasn't been re-signed. Remember, we had that, that conversation about-
Yes, you're right.
The new contract. So, so the rate's been agreed to. A revised contract has not been-
Well, as I understand it, Mr. Draper, it's subject to us giving them a new rate.
Correct, correct. We've, I believe-
So, we, we still have to give Jamestown a new rate.
I believe that's been agreed to.
I don't believe so.
Yes, we voted no.
Well, not, not since what happened. If you've got to go back and look at the Jamestown, the Jamestown meeting minutes that were on the internet, you should look at that. Nonetheless, I don't know how we can give them that because that's not, does not comport with the current contract. The current contract says, we will charge them for debt service. We didn't do that, did we?
That's why I made the distinction that we agreed to a new rate. I don't believe a revised contract has been signed.
Oh, no, 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 no. We don't have a revised contract. We never amended the contract, okay? Wasn't a contract amendment. You didn't need a contract amendment. We're just filling in the blanks. We never, we left one of the blanks off. So, now we're telling Jamestown, hey, we, we're not charging you for any debt service for this high school. Well, there's at least a couple hundred grand that we get back. Let's put it back in formula, or we send the town council after the money. So, there's a couple hundred grand. Mr. Chairman, we got to really look at that and get that thing squared away because it's costing our taxpayers a lot of money, and we've got to be aggressive to make sure we're being, that we are being fair and we are being treated fair as well and our taxpayers are. And I believe we're not. The next issue, I, I would suggest, the, the, we've got to put money, Mr. Chairman, into one of the programs that you started here. And that's into the contract to start investing in some of these energy savings projects in here that will reduce money. We've got to look at that because that's something that's, it's going to be a payback for us. What we have to do is look at, for example, consolidating quickly maybe the payroll departments with the high school and the town. We, our payroll coordinator is, is leaving. It could be dollars saved, and by looking at that, there may be some monies that can be saved very quickly in, in those areas. So, we've got to reach out and say, how, how can we do a better job? And look at these, not, it's not gas and concrete, but we've got to look at those things to see if there's a better way to do that. I would, I would also ask, the fact that, that, I would ask the superintendent, do we, do we have any numbers in there? For example, like for merit pay, you know, or bonuses? You give out bonuses this year and stuff like that. Is there any, any line items in the budget for that? And how much would that be?
Yes, per policy GCB, we do have a component in there. And it's broken out, I want to say around two weeks back, one of you asked for a printout of all the admin supervisors we gave. It's in that spreadsheet.
Right. But I want to refer to it, when it came to merit pay, I think there's some discretionary numbers in there from 0 to 3 percent, which is your discretion.
Right.
Okay, so my question was, in this year's budget, do we have any money? Do you have any money set aside to give out any merit pay bonuses?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
I didn't see that in the budget.
It's in the budget, in the sheet we gave you. Mr. Draper, do you recall that spreadsheet?
I'm talking about the 3,000 line budget.
No. The committee, one member asked, two weeks back, so I gave it to all of you. It was a spreadsheet, admin supervisors, name, salary. It also had a merit component. As you recall from last year, we budget a dollar amount. Doesn't mean everyone gets that merit amount.
I understand. I'm asking for, what, what is that amount for that particular item? Because maybe we'll eliminate merit bonuses this year. So, how much would that be?
Draper, do you recall the exact number?
I don't recall the exact number. It was, it was approximately $35,000.
Just 35, okay, just, would you do that? Because I'd like to see where that is. I, I didn't catch that, you know, in the budget.
We can resend that sheet to you that we sent to all the members?
Well, I don't think it addressed the, I think we did, but it didn't address the money set-asides, okay, for merit pay. Okay, which is something we ought to consider, not that we should eliminate it, but we ought to know what that is in, in looking at some of these things. When I did look at the budget, I did find that there seems to be an astounding increase this year from '010, I mean, '011, of about a million and a half dollars of 5, 5.3 percent in salaries for teachers, instructional teachers, going from 28 million, 28.5 million to 30 million. That's a big number. That's one point, that's 5.3 percent, 1.5- 1.5 million. Also, also, I, I look at the, the line item for transportation. That seems to be going up 24% or $613,000. Now, I could be wrong. And I'd like, like to have, I'll, I'll leave with this sheet to have it verified. Also, I see we're under the account number 232 for the state therapist, psychologist, and all that other good stuff, social workers, $1 million, 22% is going up this year. Okay? I'd like to get some information. Principals going up 102,000 this year, 6.5%. Principals and assistants. Data processing's going up by 86,000, $148,000. So you know, this line, you know, this goes on. I'm going to leave this at the committee. I'd like to follow up at the next meeting with some of these, these questions, but I think I know what's happening, but it's the fact that these are pretty huge increases. And what I'm particularly, particularly interested in, in some of these subareas like, you know, some of these other ones going up, instructional paraprofessionals are going up by $132,000 in this budget, 500%. Pupil software technologies going up $200,000 or 36%. Again, I want to leave you with this, but I'd like to have a discussion later when we, or next week, or I'll give it to the budget committee chairman here, and she can look at some of these things that I put together. I wish they could be validated and make sure I'm correct, okay? Ran all these off today, okay? So there's a lot of work to be done. But I would go back and just summarize one thing that's really striking to me. Do you realize that our contribution, okay, to the pension fund, the annual contribution from 210, let me put it this way, starting in 2008, the following year, our pension fund was paid by the state, went down $32,000. The next year, it went down by 169,000. The town's contribution, the school department's contribution for pensions went down $11,000 in 2009 and went down $81,000 in 2010. Conversely, the teachers' fund, their contributions went up. I'll leave you with this also. I am concerned because when I look at some of these percentages, by the way, these are all audit figure numbers and not Mr. Mudge's numbers, okay? Just got this done today, okay? These, these statistics are kind of startling to me, okay, because of digits numbers, and I can't, I can't add them all up because I keep hearing that, you know, pensions, pensions, pensions are killing us, yet our pensions are going down and our salaries are going up in the number of teachers we have. Right? I'm going to leave this with you to, to look at, and maybe we can have a discussion in the near future about this and what it means. Because quite frankly, these pension numbers do not jive with what we budgeted, okay, each fiscal year. And I believe what you'll see is, there's been a lot of transfer of monies, and our cost of budgeting for pensions went down because the state was picking up these costs. And what that means is, we had more money to spend. Our expenditure profile went down. So that really has to be looked at with respect to all of this and in 2011 and 2012. And that is why I requested that we have a 2011 budget. We have it today, mirror image, we do everything we have today. What does it cost to implement it in 2012? So we know what inflation and, and the new contracts and the state aid and everything else will do to us. And I think until we do that, we're not going to be able to really do a good job and a recommendation of this budget to the community. Thank you.
Mrs. Page?
Bill, I, I can't read what your stuff is from here, but, but I do see your numbers that are on there. My concern will be that when we get to the budget committee, that being a week from today, that we won't remember your specific questions. And so I was wondering if you could make sure that you wrote your questions down because your, your numbers, like I said, they, they'll be all about the numbers, and we won't, we won't remember at that time what your questions were.
I'm going to give you all of this stuff. Again, I worked my rear end off, okay, the last couple of days to get this up.
Right, but you will have specific questions for us, not just numbers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Ms. Evans.
This is a follow-up to that. Perhaps a couple of those areas, you can pass those along, Bill, to Mr. Draper ahead of time so he can maybe answer about some of those increases in some of those areas today.
Off the printing press today.
Good question.
Mrs. Benson?
I took special note of your questions, Mr. Mudge, concerning the print, the pension system. Because I'm sure all of us are avid readers of the daily paper and the news, and I knew the treasurer just announced at the end of last week that the pension fund wasn't taken in enough as much as it was being paid out. Am I correct, Attorney Carroll?
That was on the news from the, yes, the new treasurer, Ramondi. You're correct.
Yes. So that means that we will have to look at some of those areas very, very closely. Because, as I said, North Kingstown is part of the whole United States.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, we, we don't have a, a funding problem. We're, we're in good shape. I mean, that's not my issue at all. We, we, the audit says we're in good shape in terms of our commitments. So that's, I'm not, I'm not, I hope I didn't make that impression that we have, we haven't fully funded our programs.
No, 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 no. I was bringing out, my point was that we don't know what's coming. We're in good shape, as you say today, and I wouldn't dare argue with your figures, even try to correct them.
Mr. Thompson?
I thank you very much for requesting the, the public or comments from people to come in and find out how we can reduce our budget. I went around the town and I was told by people, please reduce our taxes. And it occurred to me that we could not reduce our taxes if we kept spending more money for the schools. And we could not even reduce our taxes if we level funded. And I'd just like to point out to you that the, I did this scratch work with my grade school math here. Our current town tax burden is $43,420,838, and a minus 2%, which everyone seems to be fearful of, is $42,552,421. So the, really, how much you're going down is $868,417. So you can check my math because I just did this. And it seems to me that I've already heard Mr. Mudge mention a few figures of where we could recoup some money that come pretty close to that figure right away. You also asked for more ideas. I would want to again stress to the town that next week on the 15th of February, a Tuesday, we are going to have an open budget subcommittee meeting at 10:30 in the morning at the administration building. And, and we are looking for ideas. How can we cut the budget? How can we reduce the taxes for the beleaguered taxpayers of North Kingstown? This is the only way we can do it, is to come up with good ideas. I have asked for a personnel management subcommittee, and I still think that we could do that. Part of that committee could look at position management. When a, when an opening comes up, instead of automatically filling that opening, we can say to ourselves, is there some way we can realign the positions? We can reorganize? We can consolidate, as Mrs. Benson's been talking about, instead of automatically filling? Can we increase our, our income? You know, that's the other side of the balance sheet. Mr. Mudge has pretty much convinced me that, that there's more money to be, that we have not gotten the full amount of money that we could have been getting from Jamestown. And I, I have to confess that that was one of my first votes when I came onto this committee, and I, I really didn't know what I was voting for, but I was told that it was important that it had been put off for months and months and months, and that we had to do it right away. So I went ahead and did it. But perhaps after the budget, this budget cycle is over, then we can have further meetings with what I like to consider as not just a budget subcommittee, but of an audit and finance subcommittee. Because we should be looking at finances all year long. We should have monthly meetings and find out where we stand. I know that the last couple of years, this school committee and especially during election season, we keep hearing the word surplus. We got surplus. They're very proud of that surplus. And I know that there's areas in that budget where money is being tucked away so that at the end of the year, we can hold it up and say, look, we got you a surplus. Well, where are those areas? I'm not going to be able to know that. I can't get down into all these little facts and figures, but we've got a very good Ned Draper, we've got a very creative superintendent, and if we take that bag of money we're giving them and we squeeze that bag down 2%, their creativity is going to be, they can go in and find out where those areas are. There was a, a couple of years ago, we, I asked for official figures from the school committee, what we had spent on a, a certain personnel management dispute. And I was given figures from the, the superintendent's office, saying that it cost us an extra one-half million dollars. Where did that money come from? Where's the money going to come from to deal with the current personnel management issue, which I'm not going to go in, in any detail because you've heard me talk about it before, right here in this very room? But the lawyer on the other side is, is on the clock. He's on the clock, and you know who he is. And so as soon as we can get those lawyers, the lawyer for that side and the lawyer for our side to sit down and say, what's it going to take to, to turn the clock off and get, get us off of this clock, then that's going to be able to reduce the taxes for our town citizens. I look at the school committee itself. Maybe there are ways we could look at our own operations. I look around at this, at this room and all of the technology and all the equipment that we've bought. These, these gadgets that, as I understand, that we're using cost $700, and they have 65 gigabytes of information in them. You know, that's an enormous amount of, of information. Maybe that was overspent. I don't know. But there is waste out there. We could have a hotline, fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, which we used over in Newport, was very successful. We would get calls finding out where certain trucks were out there burning gasoline and someone just sitting there with the motor running. I've seen this myself. And, and we were able to go out and, and save money, money that was literally going up into a hot air. So I have full faith that the school committee, if it goes forward to the town council with a, one suggested budget, I'm not saying the only one, but one suggested budget to reduce 2%, and then for us to challenge the town council. You know, I don't want to go forward and, and sacrifice in the school committee and then go over to the town council and have them go ahead and either level fund or even give a raise on their side. No, I would like to challenge them to come down 2% on the town council side. So I thank you very much for offering us this opportunity to give you ideas. I think you've heard some ideas. I invite people to come next Tuesday to the budget subcommittee, 10:30 on the 15th. And please, if you know ways that we can save money for these schools and still deliver quality education and the BEP, I am more than happy to invite you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to make a couple of comments on some of the things that have been said. First of all, when we start talking about personnel, that is the exclusive area of concern that belongs to the superintendent. One of the things that you should have received a copy of a couple of weeks ago was how we stand relative to the rest of the state and our administrative side, non-teacher side. And we are below the state average on our administrative side. Is that not correct, Mr. Draper?
For the inside data?
Yeah.
That, that's correct.
Yep.
769 per pupil versus 808 for the state.
So, so every time we get people that come forward and say, we need to make cuts in administration, the workload doesn't change. Actually, it grows. And we are below what other districts are spending on administration. I think we're doing a pretty good job in administration, quite frankly.
Consolidate.
When it comes to consolidation, having served on, on the consolidation committee for two years, and I'll stand and, and say it right in front of the town manager, if there has been an impediment to the school district and the town moving forward on consolidation issues, it is the town manager. Now, just one item is the payroll. The payroll, and Mr. Draper, I think you were there when we discussed this, the town was supposed to go on a payroll service. This was the town manager's recommendation as of July last year, and they were supposed to run a duplicate payroll between the payroll service and the town for one month, and then they were supposed to go on the payroll service for the, the following month, which was August. And once they had proven that they could do the job, then we were supposed to move forward with our, our payroll service. Is that not correct, Mr. Draper?
Those are the plans that were discussed.
That has not happened to date.
Well, we've got to make it happen, don't we?
So, no, but what I'm trying to say to you is-
Agree with you.
When, when, when folks start talking about consolidation, it's not through any effort or lack thereof of the school administration or the school committee to move forward on these things. We have spent a lot of time to try and get these things done, and it constantly comes back to the town manager. We have asked-
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
I was the person, the only one at the table who spoke about consolidation.
That's not a point of order. That's not a point of order. That, that is the argument.
I'm not, it's-
It's not an argument.
It's not addressed towards you. It's, it's addressed-
I will look in the new rules that was recently given out from the new attorney general about the meetings and what we can discuss. I had a point of order.
What's your point of order?
So I gave it.
What is it?
So would the legal expert tell me if I cannot mention that he mentioned when we have people? My point of order was identifying myself that I was the only one here who spoke about consolidation.
Don't, don't take it personally. I'm not-
I don't take it personal.
There are plenty, there are plenty of folks in the community-
But wait a minute, you did it last week. You said something, and then you say, don't take it personal. Now, none of that is enough. It was me. Why didn't you say, Mrs. Benson mentioned about consolidation?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Does you stand behind your word?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please.
Yes, yes, Mr. Cerisi. I didn't take that.
Chairman, point of order, please.
Didn't take what is what? I didn't-
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please.
Yes, Mr. Cerisi.
Point of order is used for, if we're not following parliamentary procedure. A point of order is not made to interject and stop somebody else from speaking so that they can make their point. That's what a point of order is being made at this table for. People are calling point of order so they can stop somebody else from speaking and interject with their point of view, not for a violation of parliamentary procedure. That's what a point of order is to be used for.
We've done all night.
It's 10:05, we've passed adjournment time that our policy requires us to adjourn it. So at this time, I don't see any productivity coming out of this committee. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, timeout.
Second.
Let's, let's not do, look, let's not do what we did last week. Let's make sure if we're going to close the meeting, take a, make a, make a motion to close it, and we vote on it. I think it was very unprofessional we did last week. I didn't say it, okay?
It doesn't require a vote, Bill.
It's most certainly- It most certainly does.
Motion to adjourn and a vote, yeah. The vote, yes. It does.
Of course it does.
To adjourn, you have to vote on a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Majority have to.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second.
Okay, fine.
I'm going to speak to the motion. I'd like to extend our time for a half an hour to talk about new business A and B.
A second.
Yeah, I didn't make a motion. I was just saying that's what I would like to do. So I would just, I'll vote in the negative.
Mr. Cerisi?
I don't have anything else to say.
So there's no motion?
There's a motion.
There's a motion to adjourn and a second on the table. And I'd just like to make a comment on the motion. I've been at meetings since 5:30, and we adjourn at 10 by policy. And I'm not going to sit until 11, 12. I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm going to make motions to adjourn at 10, like our policy says, because five hours is enough for anybody.
Well, we've got to do the town's work, taxpayers' work.
Policy. Let's take a vote on a motion.
I was talking on the phone. School committee business.
Can I have a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn?
William Mudge?
No.
Kimberly Page?
No.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welsh?
Yes.
Linda Avinzado?
Yes.
Melvoy Benson?
No.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you.